We call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. We welcome you all here tonight. We note that we have all council members present. We'll begin with an opening ceremony. We turn to Councilmember Don Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And next on our agenda are special recognitions. And we'll turn to Councilman Christensen has a special recognition he would like to take care of at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me make a few introductory comments first. This last week, we've kind of been watching the sports at night and seeing that high school football is in their championship stages. Or basketball, you know, football was earlier. But you know, there's also another high school sport that doesn't get the same kind of media coverage as football and basketball. That's high school hockey. Because it doesn't get that media coverage, many high schools don't have a single hockey team in their school. They have to merge with other schools and go into the independent ranking of high school hockey. It's still under high school hockey and Utah High School activities and association. But in order to form that full team, they have to be independent. So players band together from different high schools. Such is the case with a group known as the Ocker Mountaineers. Their independent hockey team is made up of students from Granger High, Hunter High, Taylorsville High, Juan Diego High, Cypress High, West Jordan High, Roots High, East Hollywood High, and Providence High. And if you've ever tried to get high school kids together for a practice or a game, it's hard enough if they all come from the same area. These go from basically State Street to Twill. Okay? So they skate out of the Accord Ice Center here in West Valley City. So that's why West Valley is their home. The last Wednesday night, many of you were home watching the USA Women's Hockey Team win gold. My wife and I, same time, were watching the Ocker Mountaineers win gold in the state. So they're the state champions for the Utah High School Hockey Independent Division. Now, some of the high school teams will get to go on to Nationals, but National hasn't recognized the Independent Division yet. So that's, this is as high as they get. So if you members of the team would stand up, come up, we'd like to give you a handshake, okay? Ian, come on up. You can get where you want to, and then take a picture.
We'll put it on the team Facebook page.
Okay. And I might point out that these are, at least 12 of them live here in West Valley. Three, okay. Dana wasn't sure if you were which side of 7200.
One side.
Okay. So three from West Valley, one from West Jordan. So we kept the west ones here that came tonight. They were all invited by their coach to come, but not all of them came. As you can see, it's high school. But at the finals for the championship, one member of our team was invited to sing the National Anthem. And her entire cheerleader squad from her high school, Taylorsville High, was there to cheer her on. She's a member of, a cheerleader also. So it's not just rough, tough hockey players, but they do. Sarah is involved in several other high school activities besides hockey. Yeah, as are the other three boys. So we thank them for coming. And we thank you for winning the state championship too. And then now is your intelligence test. If you could either stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, or we understand if you leave.
With that, congratulations to you. Thank you for excelling in your sport and representing our neighborhoods, not just our city, but all the cities that you represent. Appreciate your good sportsmanship and your accomplishment. With that then, we're going to go right on to our agenda. Thank you for coming tonight. Next is our approval of minutes.
Thank you for the time, Mayor.
You are certainly welcome. Appreciate you bringing them here to be recognized. Our minutes of February 20th. To the council for a motion.
Move to approve the minutes of February 20th.
Motion in a second. Looks like they're okay the way they are. All in favor of the minutes, February 20th, please say aye. Those opposed say no. It passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Now we go to our public comment period. Public comment period. Each individual is limited to five minutes. It is not a debate. Your comments are addressed to the mayor. It's not a question, an answer period. Although members of the council or city manager may respond following the public comment period. And that is open to any subject that you wish to raise. With that then, we'll begin with the individuals who have signed up. There's first John Edwards.
Thank you. Appreciate this opportunity. I'm here to express my concern about the construction project between 5600 West and Fender Highway along 4100 South. I live along that corridor. I deal with traffic and the safety issues with it. I've done whatever I can to improve my property and PD's code enforcement. And now they're going to come along and tear that up. I have concerns about how traffic's going to be dealt with in that process. My other concern is they want to widen and add a park strip. And that's going to be costly. And I found out this afternoon that that is being paid for more or less with grant money from the feds. I think it would be better utilized to do a resurface and extend it clear through to Redwood Road. That road is trash. It needs to be fixed. But widening the road and adding a park strip, a waste of money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Dave Crummonk.
I appreciate this opportunity to stand and share my feelings with you today. I'm going to tell you right now that I'm kind of representing my neighborhood and other neighborhoods that are contiguous to it. This city has a dog problem. Let me tell you my experience. I'll try to be quick. Last fall, the neighbors behind us with their pit bull terrier broke through the fence and came into my yard. Came after me. I chased him back with my pitchfork, back through the fence. He went back home. The neighbors behind, the neighbors of the owners of the dog approached me at the fence and said, what's going on? I said, he comes back over here. I'm going to be calling animal enforcement. He said, oh, please don't do that. And I said, well, keep him over there because he's not friendly. Okay? He said, they take care of it. Well, come November, my daughter was alerted to some loud screaming from our dog. We have a documented purebred Samoyed. And if you know anything about Samoyeds, they, it's very difficult to teach them to be harmful to people. Well, my daughter went out there and she's being attacked by two dogs. One, the pit bull terrier from behind us. And another one that we weren't aware of that was also living behind us. It was a Labrador mix, very big, very vicious dog. They proceeded to tear our dog to pieces, council members. Degloving skin, ripping skin off of our dog's legs. My daughter ran out there. She doesn't have much fear. She's a third degree black belt. So she went out after, after the dog. They let go. Our dog ran back through the gate. Okay, so our backyard is fenced in. Then they proceeded to attack my daughter. But luckily, she was smart enough to get ahead of them to where they were merely just nipping at her heels. She got through the fence, or through the gate, into the carport and into the house. The dog proceeded to continue to charge the house, trying to get in through glass doors, through windows, and so forth. She has video and photographs of it. My wife was there. My wife was taking care of our dog while my daughter promptly called animal enforcement. They promptly showed up. The officer evaluated the situation, tried to apprehend the dogs himself when he was unsuccessful in doing so. So he called backup for another officer to assist him in apprehending these two dogs. Pit bull terrier got away from him, went back through the hole in the fence, and escaped into the neighbor's house for the doggy door. But they did get a hold of the Labrador mix, very big, very aggressive. It took both men to get this dog into the wagon. Okay? As, you know, while this is happening, my, my, my wife took our dog, Maya, to, to the vet. And they proceeded to stick her up, require the drain stint. And she went through the process of recovery. Well, the animal enforcement officer said that it's been taken care of. Well, three days later, the dogs are back. And trying to rip through the fence again, doing their best to try to get over the top, our dog would not go in the backyard. My daughter was fearful of being in the backyard. When I'm in the backyard, I have the pitchfork with me. And I proceed to do what I'm supposed to do. But council members fearing for this mongrel dog to come back over through this fence after me. Okay, these dogs broke into my property. They just about killed my dog. They went after my daughter. They attacked my house. Okay? All right, so we shouldn't have to fear to inhabit our backyard because of their mongrel animals. Okay, so I call animal enforcement, who is run by, is headed by Brother, or Mr. Beckstead. I talked to Mr. Beckstead. He says, I'm sorry, they've paid their fines. There's nothing we can do. So you do what you can, protect yourself. Okay, so we prepared ourselves for that. We also called our attorney.
If you can quickly summarize.
I am doing that.
Okay.
So what your problem is, is that you're not protecting the citizens. You're protecting the attack dogs. They had their dogs back. They didn't see that there was any problem because they paid their fines. The problem was not taken care of. It was still there. Here, we, you know, fear for, for use of our property. They attacked us. They did draw blood. They, but they have their dogs back, like, no big deal. My neighbors go through this. This is not the first time we've gone through this before. We've had neighbors with dogs that broke in and killed all of my, my daughter's rabbits. What does the city do? Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Crummonk. There's nothing we can do, is the response we get. My neighbors go through the same kind of thing. Different dogs, different situations. About every six months, somebody's got a dog problem, just very similar. And it's people who think that they can move into our, our city or inhabit our neighborhood with these vicious dogs. And they look at us and tell us, well, the city's not going to do anything. There's nothing you can do. And so our perception is, do you give a damn? Maybe not. So my proposal is that you need to look at our laws about vicious dogs and figure out who you're going to, who you're going to be protecting. Who are you supporting? Who are you going to protect? The citizens with their children? What if there was a child in my backyard that day? Not my daughter, who's 23 years old. But if our dog didn't survive, what if there's a small child back there playing as it normally would? And these dogs came through? It would have been torn apart. And we were told there's nothing that can be done. So the shame is that someone has to be attacked. Someone not only attacked, but has to be harmed, maybe maimed. And people's pets have to be killed before anything's done. So please, please, look at your vicious dog rules, laws, policies, and protect us, please. Instead of these dogs.
Thank you.
So we can use our property without having fear. Thank you.
Mr. Crummonk, thank you for coming. Next, we have Mike Markham. There he is.
Mike Markham, 3008 Almas Way. There's a saying that, you know, if there's a will, there's a way. They did send some officers out to the cul-de-sac. They put a notification on the cars that park nose-first into the curb. So now they don't park nose-first into the curb. And along their side of the cul-de-sac, there's only room for two cars. And they have three that they can't fit in their driveway. So they park two of them alongside their house. And now they just park one over on the other side of the cul-de-sac. So the same amount of cars are there. But it was easier for the snowplows to get in and do my cul-de-sac in the neighborhood. And I want to thank Russ and his team for getting out and doing that. But I, I don't, I don't have an answer for getting the cars off of the streets. Citations may help. But you know, there's still vehicles parked in my neighborhood that were there last Monday's snowstorm that they've continually had to plow around. Now, I think if they sat there that long, there should be some kind of a citation. But I realize we don't, we, you know, we don't have enough police officers originally to do what they need to do. And now our state legislature expects them to be the safety inspection officers, to get the cars without headlights and windshields and so forth. So we're just dumping too much on our police officers to do. So I don't know, you know? I watched one of the streets, one of the houses up above me while I was up doing one of the widow ladies' yard. They just switched cars. They took one car, pulled it in the driveway, took another car and put it out on the street. And when you've got six cars in the driveway and you've got five more out on the street, you know, they got to park in someplace without parking along the lawn. So I, I don't know. As long as we continue to allow, and I almost feel like encourage multiple family dwellings in our single-family dwelling neighborhoods, they've got to park someplace. And being as our state legislature has passed rules or whatever you want to call it, we can't question the families that live there. What common sense would tell you that, you know, maybe it's very extended family? I don't know. But you know, you guys put a lot of time and effort into talking about new neighborhoods, zoning, construction materials, how the neighborhoods are supposed to look. But once they're built, we throw up our hands and walk away. You know? I don't, but, but I guess there's not an answer as long as we're going to have the problem of the houses being turned into dormitories. I was telling Steve Bueller that I looked at a house down the street from me that was for sale for my sister-in-law I was going to get. And as I went through it, I went out in the garage. And the garage was set up. It had a stove and a fridge and everything you needed to have another kitchen out in the garage. Now, somewhere along the line, there has to be electrical work done. You know? I even called the city on houses as the house was being turned into a multiple-family dwelling, which meant electrical work, plumbing, nothing was done. So that tells me I can do pretty much anything I want at my house. It's my property. If I want to add on, I can. If I want to put another story up, I can. Because we don't enforce anything once the neighborhoods are built. So, you know? You know, the big issue is we have just too many people living in one house with too many licensed, with too many drivers. There's a truck sitting out on the street that's been there for I don't know how long. It's been plowed around. No license plates on it whatsoever. But that works out fine because if they need the license plate off of that car, they put it on another one because the people that own that house, it's a used car lot. You know, they bring them home, they repair them, they park them on the lawn to fix them. But they take them, and they do this on Fridays and the weekends. So people have our schedule figured out. And then they pull them back on one of the multiple driveways they have in their yard. So people know our, our gig, you know? If they don't have licenses on them, a lot of times they just back them into the driveway so you can't see it's not licensed. Like I say, I don't know if there's an answer because we just don't have the staffing, can't afford the staffing to, to go after this and make it all happen. So I apologize for my rant last week about blaming everybody because there really isn't a good answer. I don't know what to say or how to do it. Some of our other rules just have to be enforced. Thanks.
Thank you. Michelle Edwards.
Thank you for your time. I also want to bring up the 4100 South construction project. Yes, I agree that the road needs to be resurfaced. It's terrible. But I don't think people have looked deeply into how this affects everybody that lives right on that road. People are going to be losing property. People are going to be losing fences and trees and power lines because they want to widen the sidewalks. I'm a stay-at-home mom. Our children sleep on the front of our house. They want to add extra lighting so that affects, you know, how my children are going to sleep. I'm home all day, so construction's going to be a huge impact on how I do things and how we get in and out of our home. I think there needs to be some more looking into what they're really going to do and maybe a better way of going about doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, if I get this right, Shihad Ali. Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I looked forward to come and talk to you for a long time. But to be honest with you, I do not want to push things fast while still there is a space for wisdom. I have a case where it's a kind of tricky, a little bit in one hand. I have a great deal of relationship with this city. It goes back to the days of the great mayor, Mike Wonder, whom I was one of the main guys who contribute and volunteer for you. I wish that kind of mindset the great mayor, Mike Wonder, had running the city or helping running the city because all of you, the democracies, all of you worked toward that. Unfortunately, after Mayor Wonder left, things are changed 180 degrees. The change, not to the bitter, rather, I mean, it would not go to the bitter 180 degrees. Clearly to the worst. I strongly believe it's not anybody in this city responsible directly for that change. Actually, as the genesis of the change. The genesis of the change is a host on the radio. His name is Jim Kirkwood. So merchant, you know, he keeps switching religions and things like that. And he claims he's, at last, he's Jewish. Of course, he's not to be a Jewish. Your mother must be a Jewish. And because I'm an Arab, he started working against me directly because of that. Despite the fact every Jewish knows me. He know I am a peace-loving and I look at them as blood, as my cousins, sons of Abraham. You know? Actually, the Israelis, they know that very good. And they keep contacting my mother because she's next door in Syria, but next door to Israel. And they, without their help, my mother, she's 78 years old, will have major problems with the heat and food because of the war in Syria. Now, I do not want to today go on details because that's not the issue. The issue is this. I try to contribute. And when I try to help, for example, in the President Day, I said I want to dance and I am in the state of Utah in West Valley City. When somebody heard that, the word West Valley City, I promise you, he sent that me, not one cop, three. One after one, the police, you know? And not all the police are bad. Let's have that straight. I have some officers that are great guys. You know, actually, I buy them coffee and they buy me coffee. But there is some behind me in mind. It doesn't matter what I do. It doesn't matter how respectable I am. They jump at me. For example, Lieutenant, I think he was a sergeant. I'm not sure if he's lieutenant, but Burket. Where the guy, it doesn't matter what I say. He jumped at me and handcuffed me. Like, dude, take it easy. You know, people, the cities will pay five, six million dollars for the promotion. To get the promotion, I want to give you in the President Days because everybody listening and they have all kinds of sensors around me when I'm there dancing. They do, you know, they listen. Actually, in Russia, they know about this, what we're doing here. When we have all those kinds of sensors, electronic sensor, and we live in this era, the era of electronics. Why you come, why you hate your city? That's an issue. The other issue is my dog. My dog was coordinated by Lieutenant Buchanan, the theft. I found my dog after that three times. They, guess who they sent me? They sent me the UTA. And when I call 911, they find my dog. My dog jumped at me and started licking my neck and this, and he's excited. You know? They sent me the UTA. Like a brother, what's, it's not the traffic. It's not in bus. It's not in a truck. It's not anywhere near UTA. Why you send UTA? Why don't you send the Animal Services? Because they have a device. And my dog have a chip in him. Even though I did not need the chip, I put the chip intentionally. It's a very peaceful dog. My dog still out there. I found him three times and they allow him to walk with other homeless, actually. It's not, even if it's a family, I would, you know, I say the dog is okay with homeless. I need my dog. My dog, to me, boop, go. Remember that? The next time I come to you, we'll come with another issue. My dog, boop, goat, and be berevieu. If my dog is lost, you got to bring me a dog like that. Boop, goat, and be berevieu. And I'm an Arab and my mind is like the Mormons, very stubborn, you know? So that's why I'm bringing my brothers and sisters. Use me to your best. You do not need to use me to your worst. It's up to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Paul Nichols.
Paul C. Nichols, 5329 West, 4100 South. I'm wrong with the snowplows again. Plowing the sidewalks, clearing up under my Plowing the sidewalks, clearing up under my lawn. Let's see, we got a new police chief. Where's she at? Could you introduce us to her?
She was sworn in last week. She's not here tonight.
I'd like to know who she is, to see who it is.
Actually, this is your time to speak. It's not our time. If you'd like to remain after and leave, we can arrange for you to say, "Visit with her when she's available." Okay?
Well, she ain't available, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? That completed those who are signed up? Anyone else here to make public comment? Like at least one or maybe two more? If you'll introduce yourself and an address so that they can contact you.
Sure, my name is Alejandro Pulido. I'm at 1238 West Village Main Drive, apartment 237. And I am speaking on behalf of the Enriching Utah Coalition. For those who aren't aware of the EUC in the audience or city council members and staff, it consists of more than 90 organizations, individuals, including state legislators, state institutions, local government agencies, religious institutions, as well as nonprofit and grassroots organizations. Our mission is to promote dialogue and policies that reflect the human rights and dignity of immigrants, refugees, and all of us. So with that, I'll continue with a resolution that the EUC has come to form. And it's a resolution to affirm that West Valley City is a safe city that respects the innate dignity of all people. And especially in such a critical time now, it's, we need to reemphasize this to instill some consciousness in the city council members as well as those in the audience. So whereas Utah's pioneer heritage marks our state and city as a place where individuals and families of different backgrounds seek peace and refuge and seize opportunities to build community. Whereas West Valley City must remain committed to the preservation of a receptive community environment where all are welcome and valued regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, or country of origin. Whereas policies that negate opportunities for all to contribute to our community in their fullest capacity and/or threaten the unity of families are a threat to our values as a city which we were founded upon. Whereas local law enforcement, especially now with the new police chief, has the enforcement efforts in West Valley City and dedicated to ensure the safety of all city residents and not enforcing immigration laws, which is a federal responsibility. Whereas the cooperation of the city immigrant communities is essential to the prevention and to the solution of crimes and maintain public order, safety and security in the entire city. Whereas when West Valley City welcomes immigrants and refugees, West Valley City thrives. Now therefore, be it resolved that no department, agency, commission, officer, or employee of the city of West Valley shall use any city funds or resources to assist in the enforcement of federal immigration law. Be it further resolved that West Valley City police officers shall not make arrests or detain individuals based on administrative warrants for removal entered by ICE into the National Crime Information Center database. Be it further resolved that sweeps intended solely to locate and detain undocumented immigrants shall not be conducted in West Valley City. City staff will not participate in ICE organized sweeps to locate and detain undocumented residents. Bless you. Be it further resolved that unless an agency or agent is acting pursuant to a legitimate law enforcement purpose that is unrelated to the enforcement of a simple immigration law, no city agency or agent shall while on duty expend their time responding to ICE inquiries or communicating with ICE regarding a person's custody status or release date. Be it further resolved that West Valley City departments, agencies, officers, or employees shall not request information about or otherwise investigate or assist in the investigation of the citizenship or immigration status of any person unless such inquiry or investigation is required by Utah State statute, federal regulation, or court decision. Be it finally resolved that the West Valley City Council and the mayor of West Valley City do hereby declare that today they promote West Valley City as a safe city for all residents and welcome immigrants and refugees in our city. So with that being said, I'd like to take the remaining time that I have to speak on my behalf. Both of my parents and most of my family still live in Mexico. A lot of my family members that still, that did immigrate to the US, they're all very hardworking. And of course, as we all know, it's an economic boost, not just here in West Valley City, but across the nation. So I urge each and every one of you, city council members and Mr. Mayor and the rest of the staff aside, to please follow through with this commitment. And we appreciate your cooperation with making this a great city for everyone's living. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I believe, was there one more that wanted to speak tonight? That's it, okay. Then with that, we'll go on to, we'll close the public comment portion. And let's see. Usually, the following, let's see, I'll wait till our city manager comments and the council, and then we'll put the ones on there we need to for the next list. Mr. Paul? Sorry, I'm lost.
It's okay, Mayor. I don't have any comments. Fine, thanks.
Somehow, I'm... Strange night. And you're the city council? Yeah, okay. Any comments from the city council? Okay, we had several items that came up. We had 4100 South that came up. Two people commented on that. We generally, if there is an issue that arises, we determine if we will further pursue that by putting it on our agenda for our next study meeting. However, the 4100 South project, I think, was already approved and in place. Is that right?
Mayor, we have a number of 4100 South projects going on, so...
Well, I'm assuming this is the 4100 construction project where we received the funds. There were federal funds involved, but we were doing that.
We have one of those that's in the planning stage. We have one of those that's soon to be in construction. We have the UDOT-1 that's under construction right now. So what I'd like to do is have Mr. Willardson speak with a couple that spoke earlier, maybe right after this meeting. Maybe we could get them a little further information on what's going on.
Okay. Then we all, that will be fine. Then there was a discussion on the ordinances we have on dogs. And that sounds like an item that we probably ought to add to our agenda for next week. So we'll put that one on. The other one will be taken care of by staff. Mr. Markham Parking and Multiple Family Homes. That's continued on our agenda, so that's already there. Then if I covered it, a dog with an interaction with the police department. I'm not sure I understood everything there. So if the council can help me on that, what do you think that we ought to put on for that or deal with that one?
I think that was just informational.
Informational? So we don't need to pursue that? Okay. And then Mr. Nichols, snowplows, that we're covering. And then also, they're going to arrange, or will arrange that he gets acquainted with our new chief of police. Although that, knowing Mr. Nichols, he'd probably take care of that himself. So we won't put that on. Then we also had the issue of immigrants, immigration, and dealing with those who are immigrants to our city and their citizenship status, et cetera. That was one that we spent, boy, three different council meetings on at least. And we have in place a number of things that cover most of the items that were mentioned there in the way that we deal with people in our city, whether they are citizens, residents, visitors, or whatever they are. We feel those are very proper and protect the rights of individuals. We do not enforce immigration laws except where required by federal law. So we, I'm assuming the council agrees we won't put that on our agenda for next week.
It's all in our policies and procedures for both police department and the city.
Okay. So that's how we'll deal with those. With that, then, that completes our public comment period response. Next, we go to our resolutions. We'll deal with Resolution 18-25, authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with Utah Transit Authority for the installation of improvements on 2700 West from 4100 South to 4700 South. These were some funds that are available to do some infrastructure improvements on the west side of 2700 West, along that corridor. And I don't have it up here, but a lot of those funds are going to be brought by UTA with some special programs that they had. And then we had to match a certain portion of that, as I recall. Do you have that?
We're matching. The project is $1,721,000. Our share of that is 20%. An estimated $344,000.
Yeah, my computer is almost dead, so I'm just hurried to turn it on. Says it's going to die on me in just a couple minutes. So thank you for bringing that amount forward. I think that's all the information on it. These will be much-needed improvements along that corridor, sidewalk, urban gutter, et cetera. So we read that. And also bi-clains. Got to remember those. Very important, we're going to add those on there. With that introduction, then, to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of Resolution 18-25.
A second. Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city reporter for the vote.
Councilman Piti Samanu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norvell?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Resolution 18-26, authorizing the sale of two trucks and the attached thurrie machines to NPM leasing. And, let's see if I can get my agenda up here, actually. There we go. And again, this is a little different in that this will be a benefit to the city. Those trucks were replaced by waiting to sell them on the current market versus trading them in. The city was able to generate significantly more funds for those vehicles. We will receive $224,000 for those trucks. That is the issue before us, to authorize them to go ahead and sell those. And with that, to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 18-26.
Second.
Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norvell?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Piti Samanu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have our consent agenda. There are three items on there. These are fairly routine. Two are grants of temporary construction easements.[1648.56]